Good afternoon. Today is the April 27, 2021, meeting of the Policy Management Committee. I'm going to have my colleagues introduce themselves. I'm Pat O'Neill. I'm the chairman of the committee. We'll start with Dr. Dhaka.
Judy Dhaka, District One.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm Rebecca Smundrowski, District Two.
Good afternoon. I'm Nikasante, student member of the board.
And we have a large number of MCPS staff with us, and I'll have them introduce themselves when they each begin speaking. Our first item is the approval of the informational summary from the March 26 Policy Management Committee. Did anybody have any corrections or additions? If not, we are ready to begin the discussion of Policy ACA Public Comments on the Draft Policy on Non-Discrimination Equity and Cultural Proficiency. So Ms. Williams, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Neill. Good afternoon to you and all of the committee members. I'm Stephanie Williams, Acting General Counsel for Montgomery County Public Schools. And as already noted, we are here today to talk about Policy ACA, Non-Discrimination Equity and Cultural Proficiency. The document has been out for public comment. After tentative action having been taken by the board, this policy has been out for the public's comments since January 28. The comment, comment public was a comment for the, from the public process was initially announced. We provided background on the three main objectives for the revisions to the policy. And those objectives included compliance with revisions to COMAR, the section regarding educational equity. It also addressed a board resolution regarding the prohibition of hate symbols and language, hate language, a resolution set forth by the board. And such language has been incorporated into this policy. And finally, it's intended to incorporate the board's commitment to the concept of anti-racism. As we go through the document, you will notice certain sections in certain language that's provided to in grayscale. And those, those sections, that language is what is being recommended by staff for modification in response to comments that we receive from the public. We received a total of 41 comments. But before we talk about the comments, I wanted to share a little bit about the process that we use to reach out to the community. Of course, we posted it through our usual channels. It's on the, it's on the web, the MCPS web. We put it on the Quick Notes and the Staff Bulletin and the tweets and so forth from the Communications Office. But we also made a special outreach to representatives, to our student leaders in MCR, MCJC, the Student Action Groups, and other community groups, including the Black and Brown Coalition and the MCCPTA, including the LGBTQ+ Committee of the MCCPTA. Before I talk to you about the overall comments and the proposed changes, we'd like to ask Mrs. Cherry to share with us some of the comments that we received from her student leaders and conversations that she had with students with respect to this policy. Mrs. Cherry?
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and good afternoon, Ms. O'Neill and the committee members. My name is Shella Cherry, and I serve in CPS as the Director of Student Leadership and Extracurricular Activities. I also serve as the advisor and the regional advisor for MCR and MCJC. So just for a bit of, I guess, history or information for our community, MCR stands for Montgomery County Regional Student Government Association, which is the representative group for all of our high school student governments. MCJC is Montgomery County Junior Counsel, which is their middle school counterpart, representing all of the students across the 40 middle schools. Between these two organizations, we recently held two general assemblies that had over 450 students in attendance to take care of other student government business, to include MCR and MCJC officer elections, but certainly to have a moment to review Policy ACA. During those general assemblies, I provided the students with some background information to include the resolution from October, information on the draft proposal here, or the draft language, and gave the students an opportunity to engage with the document and share some feedback. I know you've received some of that feedback. We actually got a total of 43 students that shared some information with us, 15 high school students and 28 middle. There are a few points of feedback that I'd like to share with you from this discussion and from the information they shared. And it was centered around four questions. The first question asked, what do you think about the revisions of this draft policy? To which every single student shared that they had great appreciation for the revisions and stated that this was much needed. There were a few quotes from some of the students that I'd like to highlight for you today. We had one middle school student from Francis Scott Key share, "I just hope that we can get this across to every school in the county. It would be a good change for MCPS." Another student from Clarksville shared, "The new use of the word 'anti-racist' used throughout the policy was key because it really is not enough just to say you're not racist. We need to see active steps shown in dismantling racist policies and systems." Asking the question, how do you think students will respond to this policy? Really gauging them and how do they think their peers from across their schools and across the district? One student from Springbrook shared, "A learning environment, or any environment, should not be a place where students being treated differently based on their race." I personally really, sorry, I really, I personally really like this since it takes one step forward to dismantle racist beliefs. When asked, how can we assure that all students are aware of these changes if they're approved? And asking the students to think about, what are the best methods to reach students? What are the best venues? Or even the staff that could assist us with this communication effort? They really provided us with a litany of different ideas. And many of these were shared frequently through my survey and discussion. One student mentioned providing a short, and there was a lot of emphasis on the short piece, classroom lesson, but giving every student either a copy of the policy or a copy of a summary of that policy so that they had something which to ground themselves in. And even have an accompanying video that might share, how does this look like? And what does this mean for the students across the district? Of course, many of our students live through social media, and their best outreach is through social media. And while Twitter is often used by MCPS, recently, we are, we know that MCPS has started their own Instagram account. There was even an encouragement for the board to, to create an Instagram account. This way, that's where we know that many of the students are communicate with one another. There was a suggestion to have a poster of some of the key points from the document and have them be placed in prominent locations across the school. And of course, utilizing some of our traditional methods like morning announcements or newsletters would also be helpful. Two final points about that is the interest in having a multilingual outreach, not only for the students but to those families. And one student even shared, and I think about how we've recently done this with our Culture of Respect training, but placing this information through a school tile on the MC, my MCP, excuse me, on the my MCPS classroom. That's very similar to what we did with the Culture of Respect training. Our final question was just allowing students to share any additional thoughts or considerations that they had regarding the draft revisions. And I'll leave you with three closing statements. One student from Poolsville said, "I appreciate how you reworded the part about English language learners to make it sound more empowering and welcoming rather than promoting the false idea that they are a burden. I would like to recommend that you continue to use those efforts, and thank you." The second comment was from a Wooton student, "Glad to see the inclusion of the LGBTQ+ individuals in the draft." And last was a Newport Mill Middle School student. "Events that have occurred in 2020 and 2021 could have been dramatic for several students, physically and emotionally. It is important that these students know that they have a school system that supports them and cares about their need for education and can help them get an education in the best way that works for them." So while there are many students that also share many comments, many of these were repetitive. So I've listed some of the most salient ones to share with you today.
Mrs. O'Neill, Mrs. O'Neill, you're on mute.
I'm on mute, sorry. Mrs. Cherry, I, Ms. Cherry, I wanted to say thank you so much for the outreach with the students and for the feedback. They are our living, breathing, most important customers in MCPS. And I personally want to thank them for their feedback. I think they give us honest, fair feedback. So I hope that Mr. Cram in Communications and Dr. Smith and now Dr. McKnight's staff will take their recommendations for further communication under consideration.
I don't know, just reading some of the comments from the students are just wonderful. They, they appreciated the whole thing. They appreciated us using anti-racist language and talking about the ethnic groups that are concerned. It was just really a delight to read what the students wrote.
So Neil, if I may, it was just such a pleasure to hear what Ms. Cherry shared. It shows that when we do ask our students, we get quality feedback. And so the effort is well worth it. Thank you, Ms. Cherry.
I'll agree with that. I'll second that. I, I just want to associate myself with the comments of my colleagues. I'm so appreciative of, you know, it makes you feel good when you're reading the, the words from these students who you know it's directly affecting, and, and they are so completely in agreement with us. One comment I did notice, and I just want to put this out there for public record, implementation details are missing from the policy. I want to make sure that the public is aware that that goes in the regulations, not in the policy. So that's that. And then the only other comment that I had was, I know it's more of a code of conduct issue than policy, at least I think it is. Dr. Smith and Dr. McKnight and I talked about this a bit after one of our board meetings, I think a month or so ago. But really trying to elevate, even in our disciplinary action, acts of hate, you know, intentional acts of hate, racism, things like that. I wasn't sure if that's something that should be addressed in here or only at the Code of Conduct.
Mrs. Smundrowski, in response to your concerns that you expressed at the previous board meeting about that, we have convened a team of staff, and you will be receiving a presentation on this matter at the May Policy Management Committee meeting. It is related, it is aligned with, more aligned with the Code of Conduct than the, than the policy. The policy obviously governs the, the board, board's perspective on this issue, and, but it will be carried out through the Code of Conduct. And we have planned such a response to your concerns for next month's meeting.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And thank you all for the work you guys have done on this. And again, Ms. Cherry, for your outreach has been phenomenal. So thank you. And I agree, the board should have an Instagram account. I think Mr. Asante has been pushing a little bit for that, too. So, you know, who knows what we can do when we get the full communication stuff going.
Okay. Anything else before I move on? So as you've referenced, we, I've had a chance to see the, the comments have been from both the students, the student, the student comments specifically collected by Ms. Cherry, as well as there were some students who responded to the comments and the public posting. And there were comments received from the community that are included in your materials. I'll just give you a few highlights. We heard more than once the rewording of the English language learners in a more empowering and welcoming fashion. I think I mentioned at the original presentation of the policy, that's my personal favorite change to the, to the policy. Some of the, there were also references to the need to incorporate cultural competency and proficiency into action. Community members of the community asked to see, to be able to see that in action in our schools. We will talk about when we go over some of the recommended changes, requests for physical well-being along with psychological well-being to be specifically addressed in the policy. There were some expressions of a concern of the use of the terms anti-racist and anti-racism. There was a belief that there was a bit of critical race theory, that the policy reflects critical race theory being incorporated in the teachings within the policy. And there were concerns about the use of systemic, the word systemic in our defined term, definition of the term racism. So those are a few of the sort of highlight level overview of the comments. Again, you have all of the comments before you, and they are all available on board docs for the community to see. If there are no questions or other further discussion about the comments themselves, I'll move forward with highlighting for the committee changes recommended by staff primarily in response to comments from the public. Okay. On page one, you heard me just mention in the size, I was giving an overview of some of the comments, that there was a request to reference the, we talked, originally talked about social emotional well-being, while here we are adding the physical, psychol, and psychological aspects of well-being to the, the purpose which the board is affirming its commitment to on the, on the first page here. On page five, it's basically a correction. We have on line 131 deleted the word ethnicity just because we realized we had, it was repetitive. It was also in, in the document, in the line above on 130.
Can I ask a quick question? And I hope this doesn't sound uneducated, but isn't national origin and nationality the same thing?
Actually, it's not. The, and we spent a little time with that before we moved the, moved the comment forward in the first place. What nationality speaks to, speaks more to a person's culture? So a person's, as opposed to a national origin is where they're actually from. So, so let's just say.
It's like saying you're Jewish when someone says, what's your nationality or whatever? And I, because I always got confused by, that's a religion. It's not, so that makes sense to me now for the first time ever. It's a cultural thing.
Just a little more clarity. If the, if, 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 let's say, mom and dad from Italy, they were born and raised in Italy, and then moved to anywhere in the world, but I'll just say the United States. And then they had children. And they continued to raise the children in their, in the cultural norms from their home country of Italy. The mom and dad would have national origins in Italy. The children's national origin would be the United States, but they may still consider their nationality to be Italian because it harkens back to their, their cultural upbringing, aspects of their bringing in, in their family lineage and so forth.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Who knew? Obviously, you did.
On page 14 of the policy, the previous language read, "Ensuring Equitable Access to Effective Teachers for All Students." And our comments from the public highlighted the issue that we should be looking for effective, equitable access to effective leaders as well as teachers. So we, our staff is recommending that we add that language to the, to the policy. We also received some comments about the use of the term anti-racist being somewhat limiting in terms of the types of discrimination that this policy is opposed to, or prohibits, I should say. So you'll notice a couple of times in the document, we've added the term anti-biased. So for the first time, you'll see it on lines four, 26 and 27, promoting cultural proficiency and anti-racist/anti-biased behaviors. That's so that we want to make sure that we're reflecting any type of bias. We've outlined the, and defined the personal characteristics at the outset of the document. So we do think that that term, adding the terminology of anti-bias along with anti-racist shows the interest in, in non-discrimination against all personal characteristics. So Section Five here, we made a few changes, like for instance, incorporating the physical and psychological health of students. And in, in reading this section, it just became a mouthful, realized it become a mouthful. So we, we, we did a little bit of editing to break it up into, into subparts. The language is largely the same, but we thought it was more readable by offsetting the, the sections as such. And similarly, we broke out some of the language on page 16. And similarly, we broke out some of the language on page sixteen, again, adding the physical and psychological safety for learning and working to show that we're talking about instances both for students as well as our staff, those who are learning and working. And section four sixty-five lines, I should, section C lines four sixty-five to four sixty-nine and continuing down for four thirty, four seventy-seven. Modified this section a little bit. When we added in, we're striving to remove cultural linguistics, technological barriers. That's language that was there before, but transportation-related barriers was something that was an interesting point raised by our, through the public comment process. And that we previously had the use of culturally responsive resources such as interpreters, translated documents. But we're adding again in response to comments from the public, collaboration with organizations that may facilitate communication between MCPS and families. So we are aware, we have a number of organizations in the community that work directly with different parts of the community. And so the recommendation is that sometimes it's helpful to work through these organizations to get the information directly to the community that we're seeking to communicate with. So we have also, that's the, those are the comments, the edits to the, to the actual policy based on the comments. But I also want to highlight for you that on page twenty-one of the document, we have added the Montgomery County Racial Equity and Social Justice Act from the Montgomery County's legislation that was in two thousand nineteen. We've added that as a related source. And those are all of the recommended, staff recommended changes at this time.
So Ms. Silvestri has raised with me the issue about, and I'm going back to, well, to line two ninety-six, I think. No, two fifty-six, where we referenced English language learners. Should it be emergent bilingual learners? What, you know, we have changed our terminology. I, you know, I throw it out to you.
You can help us with that.
Yes, I think either one will work. We are using English learners, English language learners or emergent bilingual. Either of those will work. English learner is what we've, we're starting to move towards as we describe the students in the school system.
Do my colleagues have any thoughts on that, Dr. Daca?
Yeah, we talked about it this morning and the emergent language learner seems to be the new term. And I don't know whether it's preferable or not, but it, it does say that they're learning. They're going to be changing their background and learning English.
Mr. Body, do you have any suggestions?
Like, Ms. Hazel said, "I think either work." It's just, which the one that just demonstrates that, that, that learning would probably be the better fit.
Mr. Asante?
I was gonna say, I think when you say emerging, it kind of limits to the, I mean, I think it limits to those who are just beginning that English learning journey. You know, I think you want to include anyone at any point in that journey, in that English learning journey. So I personally would say not using emerging in the phrase.
Mr. Cram, you had your hand up.
Mr. Asante makes a good point, but the bilingual learner's part of that certainly captures our values as an institution and makes a stronger message. But Ms. Hazel's right, both work.
I mean, English language, comma, bilingual, I mean, emergent bilingual. I mean, his, you know, I, I think it is a, it's a, it, it's an ongoing process, but it's also not, we're not limiting the ability of bilingual, to be bilingual. You know, I wonder if we could just expand it to include both.
I would be fine with that.
I, I feel like it should be, it should be both.
So what do we think of, since, since we're explaining that the emergent seems to be on the, on the beginning, would you want it to say the emergent bilingual slash English? I'm asking whether you want, which you want to come, which we would prefer to come first, the emergent bilingual or the English language learners?
I think emergent.
And so the phrase is, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with it. It's emergent bilingual?
Yes.
Could I ask for consideration for our students who are multilingual?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Emergent multilingual?
Stephanie, can you tell us again what number this is, please?
Sure, it's on page nine at line two fifty-six.
All right. So Stephanie, you, you want to just read?
If Ms. Hazel, I think Ms. Hazel has, did you have further comment, Mrs. Hazel?
Yes, I would just say I'm fine with emergent bilingual English learner. This really is about the services we're providing students to acquire that academic language. So I think that's fine. So just combining those two, emergent bilingual English learner.
Okay, emergent bilingual, bilingual slash English, English language learners. Yes? Did I get that right?
I think, yes, emergent bilingual. I, I think that, you know, those who are multilingual, I mean, beyond bilingual, it's assumed in that. I don't want to get too confusing in here. I, I think that captures it.
Okay. All right. We've got that. Thank you, Mrs. O'Neil. Any further?
Any other areas that any board members want to raise for any questions, additions, corrections? Further comments? If not, then we will, is there agreement among all of us to move this forward to the full board for final action?
Yes.
Yes?
I don't know if you want me to move it or it's just.
Just raise your hand if you're in agreement that we're moving it forward for final action to the board. Okay, so.
I just have a question about oppressor. Is there, is there somewhere in here, I thought I saw somewhere in here that we talked about oppressor? Because one of the adults felt that that should not be part of our policy, you know, to make people feel bad. I don't know. I, I thought I had seen it in here. Maybe we need to look over to see where they found that.
You say oppressor, Dr. Daca?
That they, the parent or the adult disagreed with using the word oppressor when talking about different groups and how they're treating each other. And I think that person must have gotten the language from the policy, but I can't remember where.
It's not the word oppressor. It's the word oppression in the definition of racism at line one forty on page five.
All right, well, the adult does not like that.
You know, we get lots of input on policies. And I mean, there were some interesting ones about hate symbols and, or particular, I'm thinking of one in particular. And, you know, input does not always mean agreement. And I think this policy is a good policy reflecting in the values that we want in MCPS. And I think it is a policy that will stand the test of time. So.
Well, but I still think we have adults who are going to be objecting to oppression or oppressor. They do not want to look at it that way. We need to be able to explain why it's important, what it really means in terms of what's happening. We know that there's oppression going on in this country, but we know that there are people who deny it.
And, you know, I don't know how we get around solving the problem of those who object. I mean, I think our policy has to be what, done, what is the right thing to do. And they will, you know, we, as we know, in anything the Board of Education does or MCPS, there are those who criticize and may not agree, but we have to.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. And what you're saying is right, but we have to be able to say why we're using oppression.
Ms. Williams, Mr. Body?
So, yeah, so just the idea that, you know, unless we are dealing with these things and actively interrupting these behaviors, whether they be hate symbols, whether it be language, whether it be exclusion in whatever shape, way, shape or form, we are create, we create oppressive spaces for some of our learners. And so that's the, at the core of the work is the idea of liberation and access opportunity and equitable outcomes for every one of our students. And so that's why it's mentioned in, in the policy.
Thank you for expressing it that way.
Okay, any other comments for the good of the order related to this policy? If not.
Mr. Asante has a question, Mrs. O'Neil?
Um, not really a question or anything, but I just wanted to reemphasize what's already been discussed about the, how excited students are to hear this. I have gotten lots of messages because this has been circulating around social media as well. And in the different meetings I had the chance to be at those general assemblies, Ms. Cherry was talking about earlier. And there's just a lot of energy around this. So once again, thank you for the work that you've done around this. I think this was a very needed update to this policy. And a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of students who are excited to see this being put into, into actual policy.
All right. Well, that concludes the Policy Management Committee for today. So when is this slated to come to the board for final action?
Yeah, we should take it for final action. I agree.
Well, it is. It's already scheduled.
I think it's May twenty-fifth.
Okay.
It is scheduled.
Okay. All right. Well, this concludes the meeting. Thank you all and thank you staff for all of your hard work in outreach to gather comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.